Good evening. Today is Monday, April 12, 2021. This is a special meeting and workshop with the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Lori, Cynthia, second. All in favor? Okay. We're just going to immediately go into executive session and then we'll come on back out at around 7:30 for our workshop. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Cynthia, second. Laura, Lori, all in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Good evening again. Today is Monday, April 12, 2021. This is a special meeting and workshop with the Board of Education. We actually opened the meeting already at 6 o'clock and then immediately went into executive session. And we have completed our executive session, so now we're here for the workshop and special meeting portion. If we could start with the pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. We got a pretty packed workshop with a lot of good presentations, so we'll just jump right into it. I apologize for us being a few minutes late. Before we start though, I just wanted to take a really quick second and just acknowledge and congratulate Dr. Lori Gerald. She just earned her doctorate degree, Doctorate in Education, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Really, really proud of her, so congratulations to her for that.
Thank you very much. That was very nice.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. So I think our first presentation is budget update for the 2021-2022 school year.
Should we move? What are we going over there?
I guess we can go over there if you want to see the screen.
Yeah. I can see that.
Good evening, Tuckahoe Board of Education, colleagues, and community members. At the March 15th Board Meeting, I presented along with our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Lee Liu, our proposed budget. We provided an in-depth review of the district's finances and impact of this proposed budget on tax levy. Tonight, Ms. Liu will present on our foundation aid, the Corona Response and Relief Act, the March 2021 American Rescue Plan Act, and the positive impact it has had on New York State schools, and particularly Tuckahoe, and this budget. Thank you to our state Senator Shelley Mayer and our Assembly Member Amy Pollan for their efforts in demanding fully funded foundation aid for New York schools, and especially for Tuckahoe Union Free School District. Mr. Keough, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Technology, and the Cottle Principal and Assistant Principal John Marash and Pete Kigallin will then spotlight the elementary curriculum, much like Dr. Linehan did in our March budget presentation. Our goal is to tie curriculum and instruction to the budget process. Again, special thanks to Mr. Keough, Ms. Liu, and our Treasurer, Ms. Sparks, for their leadership and collaboration in developing this budget. Of course, appreciation also goes to our building leaders for their input and contributions to the coherency of this proposed budget. Lastly, thanks to all our teachers and staff for the input, care, and hard work. The school budget provides the resources to support our mission, points of pride, and our strategic plan goals. Our work is driven by a very specific mission, to prepare every student for excellence. This budget supports these three specific goals that led to our strategic plan and steer our work. The budget we will present tonight moves us closer to achieving these long-term goals. The budget is based on the four pillars of our strategic plan. This proposed budget therefore promotes emotional learning, social and emotional learning, contemporary teaching and learning strategies, programs to meet the diverse needs of learners, and professional learning to build our capacity in accomplishing all of our ambitious goals. Tuckahoe is a small district with a lot to celebrate. Included among these many points that you can read here is the support of faculty and staff, cutting-edge technology integration through our one-to-one device ratio, innovation lab, STEAM program, and instructional technology coaches, accomplished athletics teams, rich extracurriculars, and community service opportunities. This is just a sample of the budget-supported initiatives that are worthy of celebration. Our students achieve at high levels. In academics, our students celebrate acceptances to top colleges including RIT, Howard, Clemson, Villanova, Tulane, and McGill. To date, our seniors have been awarded almost $7 million in scholarships, and this is a very small class. In athletics, our students receive all league, all conference, and all section honorifics. In extracurriculars, students contribute to the community, express themselves through the art, and hone their skills in clubs and teams. We are Tuckahoe proud. These achievements drive our thinking about strategic planning and budgeting. As you know, Tuckahoe led the way this past year with its trademark creativity and commitment. Our schools were among the first in the region to offer full-time, in-person instruction to all students. Milestones along the way included our in-depth professional development, our response to early COVID cases, and our redesign of structures and schedules. Our careful reading of the research and guidance meant we were able to return elementary students in the fall and secondary students in March. From the start, Tuckahoe collaborated with teachers, parents, and the community. The transparency, collaboration led to positivity. This would not happen without the input of so many of our reopening committees, particularly the Health and Wellness Committee. We have a staff that cares greatly about our students. We refuse to pause in the face of COVID-19. We supported our community through difficult times and prioritized in-person education. In addition, the district's commitment to fiscal responsibility ensured that there were strong financial resources to provide for emergency expenditures, and for that, I thank this Board of Education and the boards before them. We continue to work with our teachers and staff and for our parents. We consult with all reopening committees. We know how important it is to move forward to resuming familiar routines and structures while having our faculty and staff and community part of the process. We will now shift to our budget presentation, our proposed budget. Before looking at some of the changes, we will again explore the variables and drivers that impacted our decision-making. Here, you will see some of the known variables driving the budget proposal. These will be discussed in detail by Ms. Liu. And here are the unknown variables. These include enrollment, because we never know if people are moving in or out, and also special education placements, as we are doing annual reviews right now. And Ms. Liu will talk about non-tax revenues. We have collective bargaining unit settlements. And again, COVID-19 planning. We really don't know what we will need for next year, but we're feeling very positive. Next, we turn to analysis of our enrollment and sections. We did this last time, so I'll just show it quickly. District-wide, our enrollment has remained stable over the past three years. However, we are seeing a slight increase in the district as our smallest class is graduating this year. Here, we take a look at Cottle. Again, in one column, you'll see the general education enrollment and the number of sections. This leads to the average class size. As you move down the rows, you'll see it broken down by grade, but if you direct your attention to the bottom row, the total, you'll see that our total enrollment is projected to remain very stable. This means we will maintain the same wonderful average class size and require no staffing additions to accommodate the general education enrollment for the 21-22 school year. When we look at general education enrollment in the middle school, you also see very stable numbers. As such, there are no proposed staffing changes to accommodate these students. Lastly, we come to the high school. Where because of so many different courses and pathways that we want to make sure students can pursue, such as honors, regents, AP, and electives, it's pretty impossible to calculate a representative average class size and an informative staffing ratio. However, as you can see, similar to our other two schools, enrollment has remained relatively stable with some promising growth, again, as our smallest senior class, as mentioned earlier, will be graduating. We now move to budget additions and subtractions. With our enrollment stable and our strategic plan in full swing, we are looking to build on the positive. Changes to the curriculum at William E. Cottle School total approximately $33,345. The proposals here, right above, will be alluded to this evening when Mr. Marash, Mr. Kigallin, and Mr. Keough will present the proposed changes to curriculum and programming at the elementary school. For now, you see it includes enhancements to our early literacy program and ELA curriculum. And you can see when you look at this chart that we are also replacing some programs, and that's why adding Muslia to replace Freckle really is a saving. So we do keep in mind what we already have in the budget when we make additions and subtractions to the budget. Now, Mr. Keough and Dr. Linehan presented on the middle school, high school proposals in depth at our March meeting. And for anybody who's watching online, please know that all our budget presentations are on our website. The middle school and high school are requesting approximately $36,000 to strengthen the bridge between elementary math and middle school math, expand online courses and advanced placement offerings, and launch an exciting new course in entrepreneurship. And really, if you watched that last presentation, our teacher did a wonderful job showing us what that will look like next year. So we are looking at the introduction of envisioned materials to grades six and seven, increased investment in our online classes, and the launch of an exciting new course. This year, as you know, all students participated in a universally accelerated program in seventh and eighth grade. Next year, we are keeping the universal acceleration program in seventh grade, looking to prepare more students for rigorous coursework in high school and beyond. A math symposium course will be added to the seventh grade to further nurture advanced students' joy for math. This course will be offering rigorous enrichment through project-based learning. We will also build in more support for students who need assistance with the accelerated pace of the seventh grade math offering. Our goal is to increase the rigor of our seventh grade curriculum and provide more opportunities for students to accelerate in middle school. More information will be provided in the form letter from Dr. Linehan and Mr. Keough, but I wanted to take a minute to respond to some questions I have received since our previous meeting and underscore our district's commitment to enhance rigor and opportunity for all students. District-wide, we are moving toward a direct progress monitoring service. RTIM, direct, is a service that will aid us in collecting data, analyzing work samples, and monitoring progress. We are training elementary users on the system this year, and next year, our instructional support team at WEC will be able to use this repository to monitor the different tiers of RTI, response to intervention, and multi-tier systems of support, and then we will bring it to the middle school. Additionally, we are moving away from the STAR assessment in order to use IREDDI's diagnostic and benchmarks test coupled with their instructional modules. This will provide students with support and enrichment, aiding our struggling learners and challenging those who are looking for additional enrichment. We are also proposing some changes in staffing. We are changing our library program at the elementary school, infusing more reading and literacy opportunities into classroom instruction. We are also planning to add 1.0, which is one full-time consultant teacher, so that each grade level has a special education teacher, and reducing the total of 8.0 teaching aides monitors or monitors. Those changes at the elementary school are altogether a reduction of 8.0 full-time equivalents. Meanwhile, we are adding additional math instruction to support students who can benefit from the additional support and those who need enrichment in math. So we're changing it from math lab. We have heard what some parents have said, and we also think it's a good idea to ensure the enrichment for those students who can excel in math and also to provide support for those students who may need support. As we are moving to a more rigorous program in the seventh grade, we wanted to provide supports on both sides. The Tiger program is budgeted as a 1.0. Again, this is due to the pandemic. We have some kids in the high school who really are struggling getting the credits that they need, and we expect to use this with multiple teachers, as some students will require just a portion of the day with Tiger Academic Intervention Support Program. Ultimately, this budget altogether reflects a reduction of 6.8 FTE staffing changes. Again, the aides that are leaving and security monitors are due to what we added during the pandemic at Cottle so that we could have all students in full time. Here are some changes also in extracurriculars and social emotional learning. At our last presentation, Dr. Linehan and Mr. Keough communicated that engaging extracurriculars that focusing on strengthening academics, technology, and innovation advance our strategic plan. We are proposing an additional $25,000 for equipment, advisors, travels, participation fee, and supplies for all of these clubs that we are adding. The debate team, technology innovation team, which will be working on robotics, coding, and web design. We are also using the Panorama School Climate Survey, which will provide us with data and metrics on SEL, social emotional learning. Using their nationally-normed statistical interference, we can review responses with an eye toward continuous improvement. As we move towards having all our students back and seeing how this year went, identifying benchmarks and reviewing strategic goals aligned with students, staff, and community perception data will be critical. We believe that our students, we need to be honest, and some students may have struggled through this, and some students may need additional help. We also may have some positives also, so we want to really collect real data and be transparent. Our strategic plan is very bold. In order to further our faculty's skill set, we have put in a lot of very innovative learning techniques. We are excited to move forward on project-based learning for our secondary students through a partnership with PBL Works through the Buck Institute. This work will help us infuse project-based learning into our school system. Next week, a cohort of secondary teachers will begin a pilot project with the institute. In order to accomplish our literacy goals, which is something that is very important to all students and to our district, we are expanding foundations to third grade. We understand in Tuckahoe that students need to learn to read, and that it's very important that students learn to read in the early grade, and that phonics is part of it. So we are investing in foundations, and you will see that tonight in the presentation. And we are also investing in Wilson reading training for special education teachers. It's important to us that our teachers who are providing AIS support and/or special education support use scientifically-based teaching methods to help our students learn to read. Our special education teachers will be trained in this system, and it's a very intensive year-long training, ensuring a comprehensive and holistic reading support for all learners. To continue to support students in the summer months, we are requesting an additional $20,000 to strengthen our summer academic support program. We had started that program last year, but we know that we want to make it really robust this year, and we want to make sure that our students who need either tier-two and tier-three interventions in reading and math have the ability to be a part of this. We are going to make it so that it's useful for students, but they will still be able -- we will try our best to work around schedules, because we know our students also need the summer. We can see it by how much our students are enjoying sports and extracurriculars right now. We are going to use our IREDDI system to target interventions to students, and we are going to also monitor progress. We will also be able to support credit recovery in the high school for students who may need this. We added $10,000 to this last proposal that we did last month. We have heard from parents that they would like their students to have some intervention over the summer. When looking to technology, we need to issue replacements to students in the sixth, seventh, ninth, and tenth grade. This will be accomplished through an installment agreement. We are also setting aside money for replacement interactive whiteboards, which have been used in excess this year. We are also setting aside funds for website improvement projects. Mr. Keough, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, is working closely with our webmasters, reviewing local sites, and assessing our current site's strengths and weaknesses. This could include purchase of cameras, video, and photo editing software and hardware. An annual transfer from the general operation budget to a capital line to allow the district to make annual renovations and upgrades to maintain and improve our buildings and grounds. This provides for ongoing infrastructural needs. It's allocated really for emergency repairs whenever they occur. These funds are not funds that are used in one year. They are for ongoing maintenance and repair. The sum of these budget additions and subtractions is $383,644 to our budget. And now, Ms. Liu will spotlight fiscal responsibility.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. So if we take a look at the 30,000-feet budget summary, what we propose for next year for the 2021-2022 school year, the proposed budget is $36,926,600. That's a budget-to-budget increase of 1.38%. We're also proposing a tax levy percent increase of 2.37%. This tax levy increase is tax cap compliant, and as I'll show you in the following slides, is below our maximum allowable tax cap limit of 2.72%. This is a copy of the form that we submit to the Office of the State Controller. It's a calculation that the State Controller provides for every district that they fill in, or some of the lines are actually pre-populated. We fill in the additional information to calculate what our maximum allowable tax levy would be. As you can see on the third line, we have a tax cap reserve amount of $85,072. That is an over levy from the 2020-2021 school year that we, after the fact, determined was a result of some changes in our restructuring of how we were repaying our capital debt. We reported it to the Office of the State Controller, and they had us reserve that money out of this year's revenues to offset next year's tax levy. So we're following their instructions, and we're using that money to offset not spending it this year, using it to offset next year's tax levy. When you go through the calculations, we determine the maximum tax levy that we can have in the district and have found that that would be a 2.72% increase. Our proposed expenditure budget, as I mentioned, would be $36,926,600. Here are the general categories that we will be breaking that budget out into, and as you can see, it's a budget increase of $503,400 or 1.38%. We have, as you see, an interfund transfer. That's a largest increase of $200,000 increase year-over-year, and that's because we are budgeting a $250,000 transfer to capital, which will include HVAC and classroom renovations, lighting, windows, other interior renovations, masonry, asphalt roofing, safety and security upgrades, things that we would like to accomplish over the next few years that would not necessarily be included in our capital bond that we'll discuss later as well. These are smaller annual upgrades and improvements and repairs. So our proposed expenditure budget by object, which means by the various different ways we can look at the budget, it's the same bottom line, $36,926,600, but here I've broken it out into salaries and benefits and compared it to the previous year, as well as other lines like equipment, materials and supplies, and other expense items. As you can see, the largest increases really are the interfund transfer, where we are increasing that number to take advantage of an opportunity to do these types of improvements in the district, as well as the various other areas are pretty much maintaining themselves over the prior year with regular increases or decreases. If you look at it on a pie chart, you can see that salaries and benefits are about three-quarters of our budget. That's the large half-circle in blue and the small pink quarter section, and that's because we are basically a labor-intensive school district. Most of our costs are labor, salaries, and benefits, and the things that go along with that. The remaining one-quarter to 30% of our budget is all the other items, such as textbooks, debt service, contract transportation, materials, equipment, and other things along those lines. Now, we'll talk about state aid and how that's impacted the budget this year. When we first took a look at our budget at the last presentation, the Governor's proposal had proposed a foundation aid of no change from the current year of $1,304,843. The proposal from the Governor's budget was, again, $1,304,843. However, this past week, in the enacted budget by the state, the Tuckahoe Foundation Aid was increased to $1,693,899, we estimate, and that would be a change of close to $400,000 increase. All the other aids have changed based on actuals and not significantly. However, that was the largest, obviously, increase to the budget on that line. In addition, if you look below the line, there are the federal grants that have just been announced as part of the Stimulus Act and the other programs that have been coming out from the federal government. One of those is the CRRA, Corona Response Relief Supplemental Act, I believe. That's the acronym. And that is $253,000 and change to the district, and the American Rescue Plan, also known as the ARP Act, and that's $315,510 to the district. So those aids can be used over a period of several years. They do not have to be spent in the next year, but they do have to be applied to things related to repairs, improvements, renovations, educational, as well as facilities-wide for COVID-related issues. This slide is interesting. This takes a look at the district's foundation aid over time. Foundation aid is a block grant, basically, by New York State Education Department, and what it is, is monies that are provided that the district can use in any way it sees fit. They're not restricted to any particular use. They're not reimbursements for anything we've done in the past. It's just a block aid each year. So the red and the blue, or the blue and the orange bars, show the state aid that we have in the formula, as well as what the state has given us. And then the gray line is what the new formula that they enacted in 2007 would provide to the district. In 2007 and '08, the state tried to equalize or make more equitable the state aid to districts around the state, so they put into place a new formula, and they planned to increase aid and equalize it around the state to make it more fair. But what happened in 2009 was the Great Recession, and at that time, all state aid was frozen. The state decided not to make any changes to state aid at that time to foundation aid. So as you can see, those lines are basically flat, but the gray line continues to be much higher as to what the district should have received. Finally, in 2021-22, the state has decided to try to balance that more to a better degree. Many districts in Westchester County have found that they were significantly below where they should have been for foundation aid. And finally, the state has decided to try to bring that more in tune to what it should be. And so for 21-22, that's why we're seeing such a large increase in our foundation aid to try to bring us closer to what we should be. In the past, we were about 45% of where we should be, and now with this new aid, we are going to be about 60%. And we believe if the funding is available, although there are no guarantees, that that gap should continue to be made smaller and smaller, and the district will see more of the aid that it should be seeing. So here's a look at all our revenues, not just state aid, that we're taking a look at for next year. With our increase in property taxes, we will be going With our increase in property taxes, we will be going, looking at an increase of about six, seven, close to $700,000 in revenues from property taxes. We're seeing some slight gain in our pilots and sales tax revenues. Charges for services, there is a decline. We don't bring in for tuition as many students as we may have in the past year, so there is a small decline there. Other revenues have also declined particularly interesting. Interest rates have pretty much gone close to zero for the past year or so. We don't expect a big improvement there, so we're not anticipating much change in interest income. And then, as you can see, there is an increase in the state aid and Medicaid aid, which is the federal aid. We have the federal funds below the line. So before we get to the appropriated, and before we get to the other aids, we can see that we have $34,961 in revenues, and we have $36,926,600 in expenses. Let me say that again. $34,961,177 in revenues, $36,926,600 in expenses, which leaves a gap of $1,965,423, and that we are showing as filled with appropriated fund balance, or the district's reserves. Here's a look at it on a pie chart. As you can see, property taxes are about 80%, a little over 80% of our budget. The remainder come from the various areas of non-resident tuition, interest income, sales tax. State and federal aid is a little under 10%, and appropriated fund balance is about 5 and 1/3%. Here's a graphic representation of our tax levy history. So as you can see, the bars show you the total budget and the total levy over the years, and the line on the bottom is our levy increase percent. So as you can see, our total budget has gone up over the years, but our tax levy increase has remained relatively flat while the budget's been increasing. And that's why we've been using, or become more reliant on, using our reserves and appropriated fund balances to close that budget gap. As you can see, that is not going to be sustainable forever, so it is a good idea to continue to look for ways to bring down the use of reserves to close the budget gap, as we are limited to how much we can raise taxes or bring in other revenues. A budget-to-budget comparison, again, shows that the budget-to-budget percent change has really gone down over the years. We had a period of time in about 20, starting in about 2017-18, till the budget rose, and now it's starting to bring down the year-over-year change. The average over the seven-year period has been 2.2%. Now we're going to take a look at our fund balance and the place, this is really an investigation of where our money is in the bank, in our savings accounts, and how it's restricted and non-restricted, and how we can and can't use that money. So I'll, in a briefly, go into that as well. We have $8,317,000 in reserves, but as you can see, close to 4.7 million of that is restricted by the type of reserve it's placed in. Those funds can only be used for those purposes. So more than half of our fund balance of 8.3 million is restricted to various reserves, such as the retirement contributions, employee benefits, accrued liabilities, tax sursuries is the largest one, and debt service reserve. And as you can see, tonight even, as you'll see on our agenda later, every year we are paying out significant monies in reimbursements for tax sursuries to commercial property owners. And so the fact that we have those, that large a reserve allows us to be able to make those payments without either raising taxes inordinately to support it, or going to the bond market to borrow to do that. We can pay them from our reserves. In addition, we have an appropriation for balancing the budget that is restricted to being set aside in the event it's needed to balance the budget each year. And then finally, we have our unassigned fund balance on the bottom of 1.456 million. That's our 4% savings account. That's not restricted to any use. The state only allows us to keep up to 4% in that type of account, and we maintain, we try to maintain, and we have maintained every year, 4%. It's 4% of our next year's budget. So that would be the amount, and 1.4 million is really the only amount that we have available that's unrestricted. And that amount of money is really set aside for emergencies, as well as any unexpected expenses that may come up. It gives us an opportunity to pay for those if we choose to that way. For this year, for the, if you can go back, Chris, once? Thank you. The bottom half of that chart shows you our projection for the end of this year. We're taking a look at our estimated revenues for this year, fiscal ending June 30th, of $34,190,683, and our estimated expenses through the end of the year of $34,14,029. So we do anticipate that this year, after all, we may have a very small surplus of a million, I'm sorry, $176,654. We determined that this is a better situation than we thought we would be in, as we just recently learned, that we will not be withheld any of our state taxes or other issues on those natures that we were concerned about. Our sales tax revenues are coming in better than we had anticipated a few months ago. So some of those things have been helping to show that we will not run a deficit. We will actually have a very small surplus, and we'll see how that ends up as we get closer to year-end. And here's a look at how we've been utilizing our appropriated fund balance to close the budget gaps each year. These were the estimated amounts at budget time that we anticipated we would need to close the budget gap. And as you can see, from 2016-17 to last year, that amount has been increasing each year. And as I had said earlier, at some point, it becomes unsustainable because we won't have the money in the bank to set aside to close those budget gaps. This year, with the influx of the new monies from SED in the way of foundation aid, we have an opportunity to bring that down a bit and make it more manageable to the projected $1,965,423 for 2021-22. And that's just a summary here of what we've been talking about, of how to close that budget gap with our reserves. And again, this is just the various alternatives you have to close that budget gap. You can always increase the tax levy by either going up to the full amount or to go over the tax cap, which would be requiring a 60% vote by the community. You can utilize our reserves, which is my recommendation, of the $1,965,423. It should be noted that a small portion of that, $114,505, is just money in, money out from a premium we received on selling a short-term debt object this year. So we'll actually only be needing from our actual savings accounts $1,859,18. And then the net impact is this balances our budget. Here's a history of our usage, again, in fund balances over the years. And as you can see, the net impact is it balances the budget, and the rationale for doing it this way is to avoid cuts that would be required to balance the budget, because as by state law, we must have a balanced budget every year. And we are tax cap compliant as well by doing it in this fashion. This slide just gives you a recap of the ARP, the American Rescue Act, that the federal government is providing to the district this year. It shows some of the rules that are attached to utilizing those funds. Tuckahoe's allocation is $315,510. We're waiting for more guidance from the state and the federal government as to the types of paperwork and budgeting that they want to see for our plans to spend the money, but that is just a recap of what they are providing to us. And finally, we did want to take a look at what would be the impact if our budget is not passed. We would have to go to a contingency budget, and the formula that's provided by the state shows that if we do need to go to a contingency budget, the district would be required to make cuts totaling $690,000. Finally, as part of the budget vote on May 18th, there will be a proposal to, for a capital project that we've been discussing, and we will discuss more later this evening. The proposed capital project is to complete the Cottle Field, various large renovations to spaces at Cottle and the middle school, large infrastructure needs in both buildings, ventilation upgrades to both buildings, with a budget of $9.9 million. Voter approval is required to move forward on this project, and there will be a separate proposition on the May 18th annual vote.
Thank you for the opportunity, opportunity tonight to share our preliminary budget conversation. A budget is a reflection of the district's values, and we believe this captures all of our values, and these following highlights. Our highlights permit staffing and support favorable class size. We are also excited that this proposed budget allows for professional learning and new programs that promote innovation and critical thinking. This budget reflects a focus on early literacy and expanding math coherence. It also expands opportunities for advanced placement courses by introducing more opportunities online and for innovative courses. Our proposals are directly linked to our strategic plan goals. We appreciate the support of the board and the community as we enact a plan that prepares every student for success. These are very important dates for everybody to have on their calendar. As you see, we had the March 1st budget priorities, March 15th, proposed budget and middle school high school program presentation, and now we're having the budget review. And tonight, you will very soon see how the elementary budget fits into this. April 20th is the budget adoption. May 10th is the budget public hearing. And then May 18th, mark your calendar, is the annual budget vote, and as Ms. Lou said, also the capital project bond vote, both on that day. We look forward to presenting any developments in the week ahead. The budget, again, will be adopted on April 20th, if the board adopts it, which we're very hopeful that will go this way, because it is their strategic plan, and the community will be asked to vote on it on May 18th. I welcome any questions or comments you may have about the preliminary budget, but I ask that we first have the elementary presentation tonight. So I will now introduce Principal John Marash, Assistant Principal Pete Kilgallen, and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Technology, Mr. Christopher Keough. Thank you.
Tonight, we have the opportunity to turn the budget spotlight on the great work happening at William E. Cottle. I'm thrilled to be joined by my colleagues, Mr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen, who will begin by diving into some of the highlights of the past year.
The first of our many highlights is the ways in which Cottle worked together to return our students to full-time, in-person instruction. As you all know, our students were among the first to be sent home when the state identified a containment zone that included our school, and among the first to be returned to full-time, in-person instruction when our team developed comprehensive and responsive reopening plans. This included constructing classrooms in shared spaces like the gym, cafeteria, library, innovation lab, and auditorium, mapping out social distance markers with printed paw print stickers, calculating safe measurements through the use of brand-new software, and training teachers in new methods of hybrid and remote instruction. Students in our extended school year program returned in July. All of our grades K through 3 students returned in September, and all of our grades 4 and 5 students returned in early November. We believe strongly in in-person instruction, knowing the value of time with the talented Cottle staff, and we are proud of our accomplishments in prioritizing their learning. I cannot possibly overstate how proud I am of the Cottle teachers and staff. In the midst of a public health crisis, our teachers and staff worked collaboratively to find new ways to reach their students. I would especially like to recognize Ms. Monica D'Appolito, Ms. Rebecca Chiaffi, Ms. Kelly Donovan, and our school nurse, Ms. Fiona Higgins, who all worked practically every day with myself and Mr. Kilgallen last summer in strategizing and building a plan for student and faculty return in September with safety at the forefront.
In terms of curriculum, Envisions continues to support student success in math. Our teachers use the Envision Math Curriculum to help students visualize math. As it is a technology-rich program, it has been a valuable tool in conjunction with our one-to-one device initiative. We were fortunate that the program our teachers trained in lent itself so readily to the twists and turns of the previous year. Envisions promotes deep-rooted conceptual understandings of math through a three-act process that involves students grappling with new learning and constructing their understanding. We have also managed to keep with the traditions despite the pandemic. Some of the wonderful programs that enrich our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Building Bridges, Field Day, Diversity Club, Dare Program, and our Student G.O. continued successfully, and most importantly, safely, this school year. In addition, this year, our Theater Club, led by its director, Ms. Vanessa Nastrey, will be performing A Taste of Broadway, which will have scenes, songs, and dances from different Broadway plays. Rehearsals will be, rehearsals have been outside and conducted virtually. They will be using various outside areas as background and natural scenery.
Among the many highlights of Cottle's year is our approach to early literacy. Here, you will see what early literacy looks like at Cottle. In this video, you'll see our students learning to read through the multisensory systematic program Foundations. Thank you to the students and teachers who participated in this overview.
This is Mrs. Kazali. I'm a kindergarten teacher at the William E. Cottle School. I'm here to talk about our Foundations program. So Foundations is a multisensory and systematic phonics, spelling, and handwriting program. It's designed for whole-class instruction. So Foundations presents the following concepts: letter formation, phonological and phonemic awareness, sound mastery, phonics, word study, and some advanced word study, irregular or what we call trick words, trick word instruction, written composition, which is the spelling and handwriting part of the program. So you can see that until, in today's lesson, the students started by reviewing letter names and the corresponding pictures and letter sounds by echoing their teacher, or perhaps the teacher you were seeing, they were echoing Baby Echo or Mama Echo, which are the puppets that are used in our Foundations program. This helps students with fluency and phrasing and choral reading. The students are also using their hands, you may have noticed, as a tool to work on the strategy of tapping out CVC words. These are consonant-vowel consonant words. Today, the students worked on tapping out real words, as well as nonsense words, which are, of course, not real words. But doing it this way shows the students' knowledge of letter sounds and the ability to blend the sounds to read words, even if they are not real words. Again, we call those nonsense words. Another part of our Foundations program is dictation, and dictation is used to write those consonant-vowel consonant words. And the students also tap out and orally spell words before writing them on their dry erase boards or papers. And on those boards, you may have seen guidelines, and they're used to support the students in their letter formation. You may have seen something called a skyline, which is the top, a plane line, which is the middle, a grass line, which is the bottom, and a worm line, which is the letter that falls, the letter line that falls the letter line that falls below the grass line for letters such as G or P. On other days during our Foundations time together, we work on sentence structure. This includes correct ending punctuation, beginning sentences with an uppercase letter, and finger spacing between words. Additionally, students work on independent activities at this point because they've learned all of their letters. They can tap out and blend words. They can practice writing trick words, which we call them trick words, but they're really sight words. The kindergarten team has noticed student improvement in letter identification, letter sound knowledge, and blending. We've also seen an improvement in students' abilities to write consonant-vowel consonant words.
First grade is loving Foundations. Let me tell you why. It appeals to all learning styles. Kinesthetic, auditory, visual, and tactile learners absolutely love this program. It's very interactive, and kids love Echo the Owl. They all have their own Baby Echo in their bags, and they use them daily. Additionally, each student has their own set of manipulatives. Skills are reinforced frequently to build mastery. It is very accessible for students learning both remotely and in person. Since the beginning, the student's ability to decode and spell words has improved dramatically from previous years.
So I really love Foundations. It has all the components for a wonderful phonics program, and they even managed to squeeze in some handwriting, which is so great for those students who really need their fine motor skills fine-tuned, and I feel that it's appropriate for all types of learners. They incorporate, for tactile learners, there's a gel board that students are able to write their words on. And I really have seen a tremendous improvement in spelling and decoding skills from the beginning of the year till now. So I'm just thrilled with the program.
Again, I must say, it truly is remarkable how our kindergarten through grade 2 teachers were able to roll out this new literacy program regardless of the pandemic, and they have done a masterful job at it. Our Cottle teachers are truly an inspiration. It is a wonderfully successful program. And I would also just like to quickly recognize Mr. Gary Miller, who definitely helped us out in the creation of this wonderful video.
The proposed Cottle budget allows us to continue small class sizes in our earliest grades. As you can see from the video, the foundations of early literacy are crucial, and maintaining small student-to-teacher ratios are a priority. We are also launching a co-teach initiative in every grade. This will involve close collaboration with the Office for Special Education and training and coaching for our staff. We are also excited about an opportunity to bridge our district K-12 through a district-wide art project. Our art teacher at Cottle, Ms. Kim Durbin, is collaborating with the art teachers in the middle and high school, Ms. Zemba and Ms. Kakes, in a mural project for our Cottle walls. Already, the planning sessions show great potential, and we are very excited to see where this collaboration takes us.
We're also planning to bring back a flex period that we call What I Need, or the WIN Period. This is a scheduled period that allows for both enrichment and intervention. All of our students have different needs. This is a dedicated time that allows them to focus on passion projects and develop essential skills. Having iReady available to all students will be a boon to this period. iReady creates individualized learning experiences based on diagnostic data. This period of time will also be critical for project development, independent reading, and other critical learning tasks that may not fit into the traditional school day.
Building off discussions from our previous meetings, we'll provide a look at iReady and some of the valuable data it provides. iReady involves taking personalized exams in reading and math. These are adaptive tests, meaning they respond to the needs of the student. If a student answers a question correctly, it asks a more challenging question, looking to find areas where the questions level out and a student's skill level can be determined. For this reason, we do not have examples of test questions because the iReady question pool is vast and responsive to the needs of students. What we do have are these sample data reports. This is an example of the type of data that the innovative iReady test provides. It would go to a teacher or to an administrator. This is a class diagnostic report. You'll see a pie chart that indicates the assigned tiers for students in this hypothetical class based on response to intervention, figuring out where the student is and how we can best respond to their needs. Are they at grade level, tier 1, in this graph represented by green? Are they one year below grade level, tier 2, represented by the yellow, in need of some small group instruction, additional supports? Or are they more than a year behind grade level, a tier 3, which would be represented by the red and would require more intensive supports? This chart and software breaks down this placement by looking at the different domains. For example, you will see students in this hypothetical class are all at grade level in phonological awareness, probably thanks to Foundations, but that this hypothetical class can use support in vocabulary and comprehension. Below that, you will see that there's the beginning of a roster that would, if you scroll down, would continue to see the whole class. But you can take a peek at Abby, who, for example, has a scale score of 615, which doesn't mean much when you first look at it, but it breaks it down further, placing her in the different domains based on her grade level status. The different domains are abbreviated in this image, but they're spelled out on the top right-hand corner where their class summary is. The data also provides Lexile scores, growth measures, and national norms. Lastly, you'll see the date the diagnostic was completed. Sometimes, it may take multiple sessions to complete a iReady diagnostic. Here is what would happen if you clicked on a student's name. So here, you can imagine we clicked on Danielle Baker's name, again, a fictional student. Here, you'll see the report that a teacher or an administrator receives. On this screen, the pie chart, excuse me, the growth chart is a bar that indicates where this child is in relation to grade level. Based on iReady's statistical analysis, it is expected that if Danielle continues to make typical growth, she will end the year just below grade level and make some real gains. However, you'll see that iReady also identifies stretch scores as well, which are reasonable scores to assume that a kid might make if there's intensive support and assistance provided for that student. So it's reasonable that a student might make that, but it's expected, if the student continues on the trend, to end where that first bar is. Students who are further behind have larger growth benchmarks to catch them up, and it will sometimes take students more than a year to meet grade, to meet grade level and to achieve proficiency. But iReady creates an individualized plan to support that student as much as we can in the time that we have them. You'll see also a feature of iReady is the little "i" next to some of the terms, like typical growth and stretch growth. This was appealing to us because the buttons helped explain the concept and the measures and how they're calculated. And although our teachers have been trained in this tool, it is a dynamic program with lots of data intricacies. And iReady as a platform is very approachable and is designed to promote both teacher and student success. And lastly, you'll see a student's overall proficiency in the column all the way to the right in the different areas. This helps teachers and interventionists plot next steps. Additionally, if a student spends more time on iReady, they will receive instructional modules that will provide them with support or enrichment targeted to these areas, the areas that are in most need. Again, this is all based on the data that the system receives from the student completing their diagnostic. The platform is very responsive and individualized.
So if the diagnostic provides the temperature, the trends and plans for growth can be charted using these screens. Here, you see the diagnostic growth screen. This gives a clear view of progress towards proficiency and annual growth expectations across an entire class. This is a great tool for a teacher to get a snapshot when they are planning. It shows areas the class may struggle with, allowing the teacher to address that directly in their planning. One thing that iReady does exceptionally well is it takes the data and recommends groupings so that teachers can target skill development based on student needs in small groups. This chart suggests that even though many of the students in this particular class, again, this is a hypothetical class, and no actual student data is being shared, are below grade level. They are on track to make typical growth. This is the end-of-year view, which allows teachers to make sure they are on track to ensure students leave their grade having grown under their supervision. These results also break down for students. Here, you can see that even though Danielle's first diagnostic, that one, that one slide that Mr. Keough used as an example in a previous slide, put her below grade level, she has consistently grown throughout the year to the point that she is now at grade level. This trend is promising because she may meet her stretch growth by the end of the year if this keeps up. This screen gives teachers a clear view of progress towards proficiency and annual growth expectations for each student. Teachers can use this when planning individualized learning experiences and when consulting with families. This is another reason we are so excited to have the WIN Period come back because it allows us to continue progress monitoring students who need both support and enrichment.
And while this is representative of a hypothetical student here, every student's report is going to look different. So you may see a student who is performing above grade level and in need of enrichment, an additional challenge. This program also helps elaborate on the ways that we can challenge students who are seeking higher, higher-level thinking and challenges. So we'll now pivot to our requests for the 21-22 school year so we can detail our view of these proposed investments into our program. So like Dr. Goodman had mentioned earlier, Freckle has been a terrific resource during the pandemic closures. But moving forward, we're interested in coupling our iReady diagnostic and instructional modules with more rich primary source documents and news articles. News ELA has a terrific reputation for offering interactive and differentiated texts that connect students to the real world. Additionally, now that Foundations provides foundational skills in reading, we are interested in exploring a comprehension program to replace Reading Wonders. As the K-2 teachers move into their second-year Foundations and Science 21, we're looking to pilot a new reading program in kindergarten. We are using our professional collaboration times to review materials and to discuss the needs of the different grade levels. We're also working closely with a local literacy consultant and different vendors.
So the video, the video earlier really speaks for itself. But you can see how it would be important to bring Foundations up to grade 3 to capitalize on all the momentum of this terrific initiative. The costs laid out here include the cost of materials, kits, and introductory training for our third-grade teachers. Additionally, as we move beyond our existing reading comprehension program in Reading Wonders, we are proposing additional funds for novel studies as well as resources for word study and grammar. We will continue to provide professional time and resources for our 3rd through 5th grade teachers to continue developing units of study around relevant and engaging text. This is a work they have already begun.
In sum, the proposed budget increase for curricular enhancements at William E. Cottle is $33,345. These changes are all tied to our strategic plan and the bold and progressive direction in which our district is headed.
Due to the infusion of literacy into classrooms and due to the STEAM lab and our STEAM teacher, we will reduce a 1-point FTE in the area of library. However, due to our expansion of our consultant teacher and co-teaching model, we will be adding a FTE for special education staff. Lastly, due to the restructuring of our buildings this past year, we added temporary staffing to accommodate split classrooms. Moving forward next year, we expect to reunify classrooms, and we will no longer lead those additional staffings.
Meanwhile, we are investing in professional learning opportunities in the area of literacy and support. As we are expanding Foundations to the 3rd grade, we're requesting additional funds for teachers to work with a Wilson-certified literacy specialist. This year, that coaching has been critical as we've maneuvered not just the implementation of Foundations across 3 grades, but also as we have explored other reading comprehension programs and modified lessons for hybrid instruction. This coaching will help to secure the success of our 3rd grade implementation as well. Additionally, we have certified many of our, we will have certified many of our elementary teachers in the Wilson Reading System as a result of our investment in the Wilson Reading System Training Program. By receiving Level 1 certification, teachers are able to implement responsive, research-based strategies for students reading and spelling below grade level as well as those diagnosed with a language-based learning disability such as dyslexia. Special thank you to our special education team for helping to get this training off the ground, and we think it will have a very positive impact on our students' learning journeys.
Another program that we're very excited at the prospect of bringing on board is RTIM. RTIM is a virtual platform that will allow us to digitize artifact and evidence collection to support responses to intervention, or RTI referrals. This program allows us to integrate data from our different information systems, monitor progress, and assign appropriate tiers of support. This will be a critical tool in organized and targeted instructional support team, or IST, meetings. It will serve as a digital filing cabinet that will help us to organize all of the data at our disposal and provide more structure for our IST meetings.
And lastly, district-wide, we're introducing iReady. We've really responded to iReady here at Takahoe because of the ways it builds off the student experience and turns over actionable data to teachers and administrators.
So we thank you for this opportunity to present all of the great things happening at Cottle, and we look forward to further discussion about some of our upcoming plans.
Okay, let's, we're going to go back. I don't think, I don't know if they could hear you here. So we're gonna, the board's gonna come back and have a discussion on everything that we've just heard. Yeah, I think I kind of want to hold up folks longer than we need to, but I think it's better to break it up. The last time we did it all together, but I think maybe it's better to break it up. So let's just talk, anybody have any comments or questions about the budget as a whole?
I want to go before my voice goes. Because I'm too much longer than the last. I have severe allergies and I can hardly talk. But I wanted to say, I mean, how impressive, like really that everybody stayed the course and did that Foundations with everything else going on. It was really amazing to watch, and I'm glad that you incorporated the video for people who might not, they just hear the word and wonder, what is it? So I thought that was really amazing. And that the teachers and kids stayed the course through this whole time. Very exciting about the iReady, and I'm really excited to hear the WIN program come back because I thought that was amazing when you introduced it. So I'm excited to see where that goes, and the co-teach model. So those are things I'm really looking forward to see, along with the digitized RTIM. So it's a lot of exciting stuff. So thank you all for your hard work, and the teachers, and everybody else.
Terrence?
Oh, we're going around the room.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, one question I did have, though, about the co-teach that you didn't mention, is that going to be for certain grades piloted first?
That's, I can answer that. So that, so we're putting, what we're doing is we're adding a special education teacher. So there's co-teach on every grade level. So the teachers will be trained in the different co-teach models, but there'd be one, so it's not being piloted, it's all K-5.
That's great. Great to hear.
Sorry.
I'm done.
So my one question about the co-teach was also, it's in all, so there's special ed and gen ed in the classroom all day. Is that right? Do I understand that right?
No, it's per the child's IEP. So kids will be pulled out for, let's say, reading. Some kids need to have separate class for reading, mostly. So it's not, it, you, under New York State rules and regulations, first of all, you can't just have all kids in, you know... have all kids in, you know, a completely colored class.
No, but I'm saying in the co-teach classes, the special ed teacher always present.
When they're in the class, when the special ed students are in the class, for most kids, the special education teacher will be present.
That's great. That's great. Yeah, very well-done presentation. I'm super excited about the Foundations, too. I think it's amazing. And I'm excited. You guys have knocked it out of the park this year. I can't believe everything that's gone on, and you still were able to keep the train moving forward. It's impressive. So good things are going to come. I'm done. A one, Lee, a very good presentation, even if finances are a little dry. No videos for you.
We need all the money.
We're less excited.
Mrs. Kazan.
Do some videos, Lee, like Money Moving Ranger.
Maybe some videos.
Try with pie charts and colors. We'll have to look at videos.
Pie charts and colors. Maybe you can do a video of like the business office.
I'll let them know that tomorrow.
Yeah. Next time.
Yeah, the budget, I had a question about the tax or the refunds, but I don't know that, that's, do we want to talk about that? Just that CVS? I'm just curious.
We can talk about that now. It's also in the budget agenda.
I can wait.
It's on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, so I'll wait on that. Thank you all for your presentations, and I echo my trustee's excitement and great job. Question I have on the, so the WIN period, I guess, how can I, this question is related to all the data collection and all of these things that we're doing. My one concern a little bit when I hear a lot of the data, which is great, I think that's the only way you can really measure anything you're doing, right? You've got to sort of have a pre-post and really look at how you're changing things. I'm just curious how that looks when you, you know, so you're doing the I Ready, we used to do the STAR, so the gen ed teacher does that, and then you have the software, I guess, that's going to monitor your data collection. But I'm curious about the time management and how that all sort of comes together with AIS students, because we also have, so, you know, you're going to have lots of reporting going on. And I guess my one question is how to manage that with enough staff, because that's time-consuming, and it requires a certain level of sort of expertise, I guess. And so that's my first question. And my second one is then, who's in charge of monitoring all this? So when you're taking all this together, how is it that parents and the district is really sort of monitoring? So a lot of times it sounds good and you sort of take a test, but then it's really, the hardware comes in where you're consistently monitoring it, and I'm just curious how you can do that.
So one thing I'll say is that this is where RTIM is going to be crucial, is having that platform where we can just consolidate all of this data that we'll be collecting. We'll be able to pull in I Ready. Teachers can input classroom assessment scores. Any other standardized testing or informal or summative assessments that they want to, all testing data can go right into RTIM. And that will be closely monitored by the IST. So IST is going to keep track of the data, especially as students are referred to tier one intervention. As soon as a student is referred to tier one intervention, they basically begin an account that we are going to track in RTIM. So there'll be a time limit in which case, you know, we'll be sent a reminder that we need to go back and take a look at what is this student's progress to this point. This is also where I Ready is crucial. So we've been, we've been using STAR, okay? And STAR is a fine program. But what I Ready provides, that STAR also provided, is a diagnostic, which we, which, you know, we'll give to each student through I Ready three times a year. But I Ready also provides us a huge instructional, a very important instructional tool, that provides and creates targeted lessons that is, you know, determined by the adaptive diagnostic through I Ready. All of those quizzes that are taken while a student is on I Ready gets input into RTIM. Another diagnostic is put into RTIM. There's also a separate growth monitoring assessment that's put into RTIM. So the student's progress is very closely monitored, it's filtered through RTIM and monitored by the IST, the instructional support team.
And just to add, like Mr. Keough said, this is not just for students who are struggling. We want to make sure with I Ready that we are also not just giving kids who may be above grade level, you know, just more of the same work. We want to make sure that they are continuing to grow and have the same, you know, it also projects what their growth should be. So it's really for all students, and not that kids can't come into different categories, because we also want kids who are struggling to get the support and eventually be grade level and above grade level. We don't want to put kids into boxes, but those kids who are already on grade level, we don't want the growth to be, oh, you're still on grade level. We want to make sure that they also have a growth path.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, the RTIM is going to be focused on those students that are going to be in the intervention that need the support, but the WIN period also supports those students that are above grade level. And we want to provide them with that project-based learning, and that is still going to be monitored closely through the I Ready data. That is, all those reports that we showed throughout the presentation, the teachers will have that to guide not only their classroom instruction, but certainly what hands-on projects and things like that that could be done during the WIN period.
And so the goal is the WIN period, then, you would have children that may be in tier one, two, they're not pulled out of, let's say, a class, which used to happen in the past, they actually have a period that they're addressed their deficit during that time.
Right, and that was the, one of the great benefits to rolling out the WIN period two years ago was we had a dedicated, devoted period to each student's individual need. One of the toughest things is finding the time to implement a tier one intervention in a traditional school day. WIN fixes that problem. We now have an opportunity for enrichment and an opportunity to support the students that need interventions.
Great, okay. And just one last thing, I want me to keep, one last thing that I would like to see, just in, and I think the presentation was great, as we move forward, you talked about a literacy consultant, News ELA, to present, like you did with, it was great to see how the classroom, that was fabulous. It really, because everybody benefits from that. I mean, you know, and it just captures everything that, at a kindergarten level, phonics, it's great to bring it back. That was amazing. But as we move forward, as those four, five grades and programs that are being used, I'd love to see what that looks like. And present it as such. Videos are great. So thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Laurie?
And then to just piggyback off of that, thank you for the presentation, everyone. It's, you know, again, I always go to this, it's great to gather the data and all of that. It really comes down, and it's great that we have a WIN period. That's terrific, too, for every level. However, I just, I go back to quality of instruction, and then how will that data be used to craft lessons, to craft, to develop engagement for our students? And that ongoing progress monitoring that we need, that may not, that may not be, you know, I'm going to go to sit down and plug in all this stuff, and, you know, because the time in a day, it's, you know, we don't have much time as teachers to get all of this stuff done, and then sit down and look at the data and do all this. That requires really, really sound instruction in the classroom. So how that data will be used to inform instruction is key. So I would love to hear more about that. I also think, like Laura was saying, it might be good to have your, if it can be arranged, to have your consultant that you're working with come in and talk about, not using a real kid's data, of course, but this is what, you know, this is data that we have on a kid, this is what we, I worked with a teacher to actually do. And then this is where we saw some improved, where we could see some improved, these are the kind of things that we actually did to address their limitation.
So, Laurie, I could answer some of those questions. So first of all, with the I Ready, and I think that they showed it in this presentation, is it gives you also a class profile.
Right.
So when you talk about instruction, you can see not only just individual kids throughout the day, what they need to work on, but you also see where your class as a whole is going. So you're not just, it's not just the WIN period. And the WIN period is like, okay, now you're just doing this, but during the day, you're going to struggle, or you're going to be bored. It really, and also, what do I need to teach in my class? So it gives the teacher a broad-based diagnostic of everything, of the class as a whole, how to group kids, because you have that diagnostic, you know, and you're not always going to group by ability, sometimes you group by interest, but it gives them all that information. So it's not just for the WIN period, it's for every period.
No, that's exactly what I.
I think that's what you were getting at?
No, no, actually, no. Actually, I wasn't getting at that. I was saying that I'm for the WIN, I get that, but then the outside of WIN, it really comes down to classroom instruction throughout the day. What's happening during your ELA period? What is it, how is that information that you're gathering informing instruction? What are you doing to address some of the limitations students may have, or some of the needs that they have that go beyond grade level? You see what I'm saying? Like, that's more of what I'm saying. And we don't have to talk about that now, it's just something that, you know, I think that, I know, maybe because I love this stuff, I might be the dork in the room, and I'll take that, I'm not even going to apologize for it. But I think that that's what, like, people would like to see. So you gave an example of the kindergartners, you know, how that's doing. Sometimes it might be good to just see how teachers, what they actually did with the information that they got for the students, and how they address that in their instruction.
Well, I'm thinking, too, some of the programs, like Foundations and Wilsons, are those things. So seeing like.
Not necessarily. You pull those in, that might be on phonics and some of those levels, but when you're incorporating it into actual instruction, you know, where you're building in comprehension, or maybe they're doing some reading, then that involves a lot of different things. So that's why I was talking about that.
Well, that is built into Foundations and Wilsons.
It is. I'm training Wilsons, so I get it, but I'm just talking about just overall, you know what I mean?
That's what, that's what I was getting.
But we can talk about it another time.
Which was, it's throughout the day. They have that for their classroom, for individual students.
Be nice to see that.
So it's not just one period.
One period, right.
You know.
And then I had another question about, I'm so excited about the PBL and the Buck Institute, because they're like really good with this. So I was just curious about the project focus that you'll be doing with some of the kids. I was just curious about what the focus will be for that.
Yeah, and that will build from the course. We have a variety of teachers that have signed up to get trained.
Yeah, right.
So one of the first things they'll do is they'll look at the curriculum that they're teaching, the standards that they're expected to meet, and think about authentic ways where students can demonstrate that. And then over the course of the workshops, which will occur over the next few weeks, they'll develop that project. So the project's going to look different based on what room you, what room you go into.
So would it be like a community project that they're doing? Just curious.
It could be. Some of the highlights that we've looked at in exploring the Buck Institute and what they offer include water analysis, include app design, and things like that.
Cool. And they can go into the town and share with everyone what they've come up with.
Yeah, I mean, there's so much stuff in our own community, in our own backyard, and I think it's really, it would be really fun to engage in this work, where we're thinking about what we're doing in the classroom and how it ties into the world around us.
Yeah, that would be terrific. Oh, I love it, I love it. And then my last question was around, so you're looking into some of those basal programs, core, you know, programs, reading programs and whatnot. Have you, are you in talks with maybe other districts, maybe not just here in New York, but maybe somewhere else where they have adopted a core program, and they're using it successfully, and maybe you can get some ideas about people who are actually using it, or districts who are actually using it, and the success that they're having from it? Is that built into your research?
It is, and often that also drives our research, you know? Word of mouth, this is working really well. You know, I think in looking at the different programs, we look at the research behind them, we look at the success rate with other districts, with other experiences, teachers who've taught them, and find that, you know, this part is confusing, and kids hate this text, and, you know, kids like this text, so all of that's part of it. And then we, as teachers and professionals, look at what we have, and we think about it through the lens of Takahoe, because one district might have hated it, but it doesn't mean our kids will. You know, it might be higher level, and our kids are ready to take that on. So taking all of that stuff and trying to find, it's a hard process, because there's a lot of stuff out there. But yeah, that's absolutely baked into our process.
Very cool. Thank you.
I had one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Because I just wanted to ask, because it was about the data things, and I'm thinking, what the, obviously, yeah, if you have data and you don't use it, it's no good. So I was curious on how the teachers responded to the use of data. I mean, I would have loved that when I was in, I mean, because we had to do it all on our own. Now you have these computer-generated things that give you such, so much information. So how have they been? Like, have they been responsive to it? Have they found it helpful?
So one of our early trainings with I Ready was titled Getting Good Data and What to Do With It. So we looked at the, it was very similar to this, where we looked at the reports, what made the reports, what's behind the reports. But then we also talked about next steps, and actually, that's also a part of I Ready. It's one of the reasons we like it, is because you get all of this data, but then it also translates it to teacher language, you know? These are groups that we recommend. These are resources we would see working really well with this group. These are groupings that you can use to have kids support one another. So we really, we really liked that because it was something that if, you know, to your point, Dr. Gerald, the, sitting down to plan a lesson, you know, like, I can't imagine not opening up I Ready and saying like, oh, so these are where the kids are, and these kids are going to know this. So when I do my do-now activity, I'm going to make sure these kids do this activity, and these kids do these activities. So I think it's going to become part of the process. It'll be, you know, we'll have to get used to that, and there'll be additional training along the way to make sure that it's accessible and a part of the process, but I think it will, I think it'll speak for itself.
That's what I was really getting at, just like what the instruction.
Yeah, you just need to, keep it alive and use it.
Yeah, exactly.
I could say, as somebody who's not an educator and don't have any experience teaching, I can see how useful that would be. It's common sense to me, how useful it can drive lessons, and I thought the thing that stuck out to me the most, and you mentioned it, Dr. Goodman, was the way that it groups, because the grouping's for you. So that, to me, has got to be a really powerful tool for a teacher to be able to put students together that need certain type of instruction. So as a non-educator, it's apparent to me how much of a powerful tool that could be for a teacher.
And it's really a tool also for reflection, because teachers know so much, you know, they'll, they'll make these groups, and a lot of the times, it'll match what I Ready has there. But once in a, you know, there'll be times where the groups don't, and they'll think, oh, I wonder, I wonder why. They'll look at the data, and it will say, oh, these kids are excelling in this area, but not in this area. So the data really kind of helps complement teachers' instincts. So absolutely, the data is this really, really great tool. And I think what we've really responded to with I Ready is how it just becomes this natural companion to planning, to instruction, and to enrichment.
So I just have a couple of quick comments and questions, and then we wrap this up. First of all, I just want to say, that's probably the best presentation I've seen since being on this board. Honestly, I think it was phenomenal. Just the fact that showing the videos and showing the examples, showing the I Ready profile, I really enjoyed that. That was excellent, really, really well done. As far as budget, the, all those expenses that we saw, the cost of these programs, are those recurring expenses? Are those expenses every year to keep those programs going, or were those one-time expenses to get those programs in place?
Depends on the program.
It may not be an easy answer.
Well, it could be the Foundations program. Will the cost of, for example, the Foundations program go up year to year?
Yeah, that's a great, so for the most part, no. Training, it's a one-time cost. The materials, they're all usable. There are consumables, yeah, so that would be a part of it, but those aren't those big budget items. So every year, I think we'll need new workbooks and things like that. So I don't have that broken down, but we could get that.
How do you train new staff? Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead. What's that?
No, so if you train the staff, and that's a one-time training, then what about when you have new hires?
So that would, yeah, well, that would be a one-time cost when we have new hires. But that's not in this, represented in this budget. This is looking at next year's teachers. But when we do bring a new staff member on, there would be.
Or like switch a grade or something.
Yeah, so we have, that teacher would sign up for, so we have a few examples of that, and they're signing up through BOSIs for training in that level of Foundations.
It will still be in the professional learning budget in some way, just like what we do with all of our programs that teachers are. Writing Revolution, new teachers come in, that is already, you know, we have training, it could be reflected in next year's budget. You know, even last year, we said K2 Foundations, and then this year it's like, oh, well, it's so great, let's work with kids higher level, multi-syllabic words and all of that. But some of these are, you know, there's consumables with all, with all the programs, and we will be, you know, having to buy again. And we might want to do more training, too. I mean, it's, we'll see how it goes, but the bulk of it, like we saw with K2, was very successful. And our teachers really, as you see with our principals, they meet regularly with them, and there's some training that happens teacher to teacher also, you know, in PLCs. And there's some training that happens teacher to teacher also, you know, in PLCs, professional learning communities at grade level or across grade levels. And that's where a lot of the training goes to. And even with the consultant, I wouldn't say that she was so key. She wasn't, I mean, she was great. But she, she was a small part of it. Because, you know, the teachers really, it was that practice and that repetition. And we want our teachers to be able to do it without having somebody with them at all times. And they, of course, have Mr. Keo and their.
So as the Wilson program evolves, it's probably, I'm sure it's evolved since I was doing it. So will you have, so I guess even what Peter was saying, like, would it, would you go back to Wilson to bring in someone to make sure that, you know, as the program, as they continue to evolve?
So Wilson will probably be some kind of a reoccurring, because we want more and more teachers to get trained in it. And the level of training that we're doing next year with our teachers is very intense. It's a whole year-long training. And they also have somebody overseeing them in their training. That's part of the Wilson intensive training. It's expensive, but it's worth it. But there'll be other teachers that will need to get paid, will need to do it also. They end up having a student that they work with, which they monitor as part of their training. It's sort of almost like an internship with, very intense, with a master Wilson trainer above them. But that cost could be reoccurring. I think it will be because Wilson reading program is an excellent program. We want to bring it to middle school teachers, other teachers as they come into our system. But this year will be the biggest cost for it.
So would it go up more than the $36,000? Could it potentially be higher? And is that what you're asking, Pete?
Well, the thing is, I think.
I'm actually, so we don't have to be that crying over for me. I'm actually just trying to figure out. So I think we, our increase in budget this year is about $500,000. 200 of that is the fund balance allocation. So in terms of programs and expansions, it's about 363?
And these won't be ongoing in that intensive.
So how much of that, how much of that 363 is a cost we're accepting for the long period? Or how much of it is a one-time cost? I would imagine most of it is recurring.
Most of it's recurring, but it also has taken the place of some other things and it won't be recurring at this intensity.
Okay.
I think the Buck Institute will be around for a while also and, you know, we'll train more teachers in Wilson, but you'll see it year to year. And we'll start, just like we did, we don't need the same reading program that we have anymore. The reading wonders will disappear as we put in something else. So it won't, it won't take the place of something else. But some of these are much more one-time. But again, as you said, teachers come and go, that, you know, it's just like Writing Revolution, the first thing might have been a big outlay, but now we're just training teachers in different levels. So we have teachers training teachers.
How much, and this is a tough question, so you may not have answered this, but how much of what you put forth tonight, in terms of the new and improved, what percentage would you say that covers of our strategic plan goals?
Oh, I would.
Do we have a lot more to go? Because to me, it all lines up with our strategic plan. So how much more do we have to go financially? You may not have thought about this yet, so maybe you can't answer this right now. But, you know, how far along financially are we to what we want to put in place to meet all of our strategic goals?
So first of all, so that the audience understands, our community understands, that we've made a very bold strategic plan. So it's not just, and you know, Mr. Keo and I had, I think at one of the workshops, we presented it, there's very specific goals to it. Everything in this budget aligns to our strategic plan goal. So I would say, I don't think, there's nothing in the budget that doesn't align to it. We've hit PBL, we've hit social emotional learning, you know, some of it, like, rethink is not, it was last year, so we're continuing to use it this year. It's some, it is in our budget, but it's not a new cost. And it's not as expensive as it was last year. So everything is hitting it. I can't, I'm trying to think of our strategic plan if we're not hitting something. And I think we're hitting all.
It kind of feels to me like you've made, you've made a lot of the investments this year and the stuff that we wanted to, you know, for the strategic plan. And I say that because I know you mentioned in your presentation, Lee, which was also very good, and I didn't get as much, you know, but it was good.
No video?
But you mentioned it, and I mentioned it the last time also, is that we do need to get, we need to get ourselves on a pattern where we are closing that gap, because it's an unsustainable sort of thing to be having other gaps. So what I'm getting at, I think, is that if we've made most of our investments in our strategic plan this year, it sounds like we have, you know, I'd like to see us start getting there. And what I thought, I don't know if you were thinking this way, or Faith was going to be, you know, taking up the reins, the, that increase, that 40% of foundation aid that we have, we're not getting yet, that hopefully we're going to be working towards, what's that number? What's the total amount of foundation aid that we are getting now, the 60%?
The 60% is about a million seven.
Seven, right, so.
I do have the total numbers, about two million.
So it seems to me that if we are, if the state's going to make good on its promise to continue bringing us up to that, that almost represents our gap right there. So if we can get ourselves in a position where every year now, we're only increasing our budget congruent to what we're increasing the levy, and that foundation aid is coming up, that's, that puts us on a trajectory of a flat budget. But that only works if we are expanding our expenses going forward within the tax delivery increase.
Yeah, and I think.
So that's why I was asking that question. Because we made a big investment this year, which is great, but.
I think all of that is the investment towards that. It is most of the events towards that. We'll do more professional learning communities to really grow those programs. Like I said, we won't need the consultant because the teachers will start to be able to do it. We'll look at, you know, what we have with our technology coaches is something that we just haven't had to send our teachers out to things, so, as other districts do. So that's where we'll go more with teacher leaders. It won't be these outlays here. That's the way I see it. And I do think that the foundation is huge.
No, it's huge because really, that's what's troubling that child. That's our gap right there. So if that, we stay true to that, we just can't get, in my opinion, we just can't get kind of, I don't want to say lazy, but complacent on that and then continue to increase expenses at a large amount as well. Because then we're always playing, we're always chasing the ice cream truck, you know, we're never kind of catching up.
I think we put this budget, put in a lot of, the whole thing with Foundations was something that was usually missing in the district. You know, the math articulation, though we have teachers that have been doing, you know, hard work and great jobs, but we didn't have that coherence. So a lot of the things that, and the project-based learning is innovative teaching and learning, a lot of the things that we want to do is in this budget. And then we just need to grow it and train our teachers and tweak it as time goes on and buy the things that we use up that's part of the program, but not the huge outlay as a budget.
Great, okay.
I'm just sorry, just one quick, it was coming, came to mind when you just, we're just speaking now, Amy, is that, Dr. Goodman, is that the middle school? And I know as we move forward with strategic plan, all these things, and we're doing, you know, I think the Cottle presentation, just it's so exciting to see Foundations, Literacy, Science 21, there's science lab construction. I mean, it's, we've done a lot in a short period of time and we're going in a great direction. Where I'm not hearing a lot, and which I know we will, I know we're going to get there, but that, when you talk about congruency and that alignment with that horizontal, is the middle school. And bringing that K through 12 approach to our district, because where we do great, sometimes we do great, but then we, you know, the middle school seems, and then we lose students, we always do, but it just, I was just looking at the enrollment, I was, because my son's in ninth grade, we have 76 students, it was 125 in that class. It was one of the biggest classes in Takahoe since I've been here. It's just, you know, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, this is not for a different day. I just want to plant the seed that we need to keep going. And I know that it will take an investment, but I do think that there's still gaps to fix.
And in the presentation, I think maybe we said it last time, so as iReady works, we'll bring it up to the middle school, because it is a great program. Because we have to continue the progress monitor and the RTIM. So that is an outlet, you know, training more of those teachers in Wilsons. Wilsons really a great, K through 12, and not just, you know, elementary.
But I think, look, even if we take the expenses, the added expenses this year, if some of those are one-time, we reinvest those forward.
For the middle school.
We just kind of accept this, you know, increased expenses as a study. We just keep reinvesting that money as we move up to the middle school.
And we also, you know, added more enrichment and AP courses. We want that to keep students in the district. I think that's really important, the rich extracurricular. Last year, we said we were going to do community service, because that's something that also kids go out of our district to, and we did it this year. So we're, we are very focused on the strategic plan. And again, the enrichment for students too, not just being focused on kids that are struggling, because actually, one day, they will also, also search excellence for all. That's our expectation. So we want to make sure we're going forward. And project-based learning is where we're starting. It is in the middle school and high school. Of course, we're also doing it in the elementary school and Science 21 is really just an example of that. But the middle school, high school is having a lot of training in project-based learning, and you can learn skills through that too.
Okay, I think we're good. Move on to the next presentation.
Thank you.
So the next presentation is, we're going to look, we're going to look at first the completion of the 2018 project and then talk about the proposed project.
Okay, so we're going to show a video right now, so you might want to go and sit in the audience again. We feel that we have not been able to have the proper 2020 opening, like, we would have a ribbon cutting, everybody would go look at our new additions and our changes in Cottle, especially, you know, with that new addition. So we made sure, and the middle school, high school, what we did and dedicated to our school in 2020, we want to make sure that everybody can see the great work that was done in that project and how the community supported us. And then right after that, we'll show you our proposed new capital project. But this is our ribbon cutting, our virtual ribbon cutting.
This is Amy Goodman, Superintendent of the Takahoe Union Free School District. In 2018, this school district overwhelmingly supported a bond referendum to add space to the Cottle Elementary School, a security vestibule in Cottle, and a security vestibule for the middle school, high school. Today, we will show you the completion of that project. Ground was broken in 2019 and completed before school started in 2020. This school community is a community that believes in its school, its students, its faculty and staff, and we are so pleased to show you the completion.
Now, we're going to take a tour of the upstairs addition to the Cottle Elementary School. In a minute, I will introduce our principal, John Marash. In the meantime, please realize that this was a year of the pandemic. And because we had this space, we were extremely creative in how we used it, and we were thankful for having it. Next year, the space will be used as intended, as a modern, innovative learning space for our fifth graders.
The new state-of-the-art second story at Cottle School includes seven classrooms, one innovation steam lab, along with two alcoves in the hallway that lend themselves to small group learning experiences. One classroom on the new second floor at Cottle has a retractable wall. So in the event we'd like to bring two ELA classes together for group instruction or presentation, it lends itself very easily to that possibility.
This is the classroom with the retractable wall. The wall can retract all the way in, and the classroom next door can share either multi-subject classes, project-based learning, two ELA classes coming together, or different subjects. Again, for innovative learning across the content areas. The wall retracts and students are together. This is, this becomes a whiteboard or a magnetic board. It's very versatile and lends itself to highest level of contemporary teaching.
All classrooms on the new second floor at Cottle School have two sets of shades on the windows. The shades on the windows, the first shade can come down and it dims the light from outside, or there's a second shade that allows for complete darkness in the classroom. So there's less reflection on the smartboard and again, provides clarity to instruction. Two classrooms on the new second floor have porthole windows that lead outside and teachers can supervise the students that might be working in the alcoves for small group instruction.
Due to the pandemic, this year, this classroom was used as a third-grade classroom, and we were very fortunate to have the space so that we could bring all students back six feet socially distanced. Next year, it will be a steam innovation lab. And this is very important because it promotes problem-solving, creativity and innovative thinking for our students. Accounting, architecture, medical research and environmental studies all involve science, technology, engineering, art and mathematics. This lab will be available for all students, second through fifth grade, and will have equipment and furniture that meets the needs of a true steam environment. This capital project is dedicated with sincere gratitude to a supportive community, devoted faculty, and the legacy of excellence and citizenship embodied by our students. This addition is dedicated to the continued advancement of learning, knowledge and innovation. Fall 2020. The Takahoe Middle School and Takahoe High School were part of this last bond project. This is the gem of our community. And as you can see, it has been listed in the National Register of Historic Places by the United States Department of the Interior. With this last bond project, we ensured the safety and security of our school building with state-of-the-art features. Dr. Leneham will present them.
Good morning. It's my pleasure to welcome you to Takahoe High School Middle School. As Dr. Goodman said, this is the, the building is the gem of the community, was built in 1931 in the midst of the depression, and it shows the community's commitment to education. The last bond primarily focused on Cottle, but we had some infrastructure renovations here at the high school which were critical. They focus on security. We have obviously glass that is really fracture-proof glass that, you know, really gives security to our entrance at the building. Students come in and visitors that come in and they register here with our security monitor. Obviously, with the pandemic, we are limiting visitors. But with the students, obviously, there's health screening and obviously, security checks as they come in. The building also had renovations to the front steps by the auditorium, which were critical. It hadn't been renovated since 1931. The gym doors were also taken care of, so a lot of infrastructure was taken care of in the past bond.
We thank the community for their commitment and support of students, faculty and staff. We know that safe and healthy buildings and innovative spaces are what will make our students soar and create excellence for all. More to come.
Okay, thank you very much. And more to come is coming right now. So I introduce Russ Davidson to present our proposed bond for this year, this year's budget, '21, '22.
So thank you. I'm Russ Davidson with KGND, and we were proud to be your architects on your last bond. So I'm glad it was successful in everyone's view. It certainly does look exciting. And the spaces, I think, once you get to use them in the post-COVID world, will be everything that you had hoped. So we're going to hear, we've been here several times before as you refine this proposal, and this is a result of the final proposal. And I just think that your committee made some wise decisions as we're talking about improvements to common spaces in both Cottle and the middle school, high school. So really, every student K through 12 will experience benefits in their daily life from the renovations that are included in this bond coming up. Reconfiguration and upgrades the Cottle Elementary Playfield and Playground. This has long been a troublesome area for the community and for Cottle. And this is also something that will benefit the Cottle students every day. And then after school, it can be used for sports. It'll be a half football field in synthetic turf. So it'll be important for your practices for middle school and high school athletics, as well as a community benefit with the walking track and be available in off-hours. Security upgrades at the middle school, high school. This is continuing some of the work that Bart was talking about in the first bond, but it really gives you sort of classroom access control that you have at Cottle. You'll now have that at the high school as well. And then something that's gained a little bit more attention in the pandemic is air quality improvements to the high school and Cottle Elementary. And we can talk about this in a little bit more detail, but it's going to be healthier indoor air and then it'll also be cooled. So it's what's called air conditioning, but it's more than just that, actually. And then you also saw your National Register beautiful school building. There's a good amount of masonry restoration, so it's historic preservation of your oldest building. And then another life safety improvement in both buildings is fire alarm systems. So this is your summary. These are not sort of really a lot of optional things. These are things that it's sort of do now or you're going to do later, and it really has a broad benefit. So at Cottle, it's the cafeteria renovation and expansion. And. a usable play space that connects the school to the playground. So, this is a diagram of the playing field. It basically is going to be regrading it. It'll still have a slight slope to it, but it'll be a little flatter. There is some tree removal. It'll have a walking track around it, and everything inside will be synthetic turf, so it'll be usable year-round. You can even take a snow blower to it if you want and use it in the winter. Again, it is not, it's a regulation Little League baseball field. It can be used for softball, and it's a half-football field and a half-soccer field. So, it'll get a tremendous amount of use, and, you know, no more mud and dust. And the playground will be moved up the hill to what's now called the rock lot, and what we're proposing is just some sort of bright painted finish for Siwanoy Boulevard, similar to the sort of painted asphalt that you'll see on a tennis court or a track surface. So, it'll be a little bit more forgiving, but it's still a road, so you can still use it for pickup and drop-off and firefighting access. So, this is your, yeah, so this is a series of slides of before-and-after pictures. I'm not seeing my titles on them, so I apologize for that, but this is, obviously, the before-picture of your cafeteria at Cottle. I think what's important to note about this space is this was one of the original spaces in Phase 1 of Cottle. So, this was your gym, your cafeteria, and your auditorium when that was, building was first built, and it's never gotten any bigger. But there's been three other classroom additions to Cottle to make the rest of the school bigger, and the cafeteria is the same. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of room, but bumping it out about six or seven feet and adding windows that connects it to the street and the playground makes a big difference. And it'll finally feel like a next-generation cafeteria and a friendly gathering space. Again, these are just early design renderings, but you get, basically, one more row of tables, but mostly, it's just a lot more pleasant space. And you can see, because it was a gym, it didn't have very many windows. And this is the after. So, again, that white frame with the blue in the middle, very similar to the second-story addition of Cottle, so it's going to top the two together and really make this school feel whole. This is the view from the top of the hill. This is what it'll look like when it's done. So, a much different appearance, and we spent a lot of time trying to render this and make it look right with all the trees, but I think you can see it's going to be a big difference. And then, you can see your troubled dirt and grass field, and this is what that'll look like when it's all done. So, you can see how the field and the road will sort of flow right to the school. It'll be more connected, and, you know, that very important transition from lunch to plague will be very natural both ways. So, I didn't know you guys were going to have a video in your presentation, but yeah, I wanted to. So, this is sort of a video of that experience. You come down the hall, you come into that new cafeteria. It's much brighter. We're proposing to put some acoustic panels on the wall. They can have a very bright look to it, some updated furniture, some of the folding tables, maybe some higher tables along the window that can be used for project-based learning or during off-hours. And then, at both ends, there's little doors, there's single doors to the exterior, so you can go straight from the cafeteria out to Siwanoy Boulevard. And then, you got, we're going to speed up and take off. It started as a walk-through. It ended up as a fly-through. But you can see, you get up high, and there's the playground on the rock lot, the slope down to the playing field. You can see it looks much bigger with the walking track and the trees removed. It's going to be a really nice usable space for you.
That's really, really cool. Are they excavating those big rocks up there?
Yep. There'll be a little bit of rock removal.
And you're just moving the existing playground, right?
Yes. We're going to reuse the existing place structure, but new surfaces. Then, we come back down to Siwanoy Boulevard, so thanks to our talented staff for that little virtual reality.
That was great, Russ. If you can put Mr. Marash and Mr. Kuyal in that video, I'd love to.
Believe it or not, we have to buy 3D people.
For the cobbler. I'm just thinking, Jason, people.
We can scan any one of you who'd like to be in it. But I'm glad you enjoyed the video. We're, you know, we had a lot of Cottle modeled in three dimensions from our last project, so we were able to sort of punch that up and add this. And videos is the latest fun thing for the under-40-year-olds to do. The over-40-year-olds just tell people to do them. Infrastructure is important, corridor ceilings, fire alarm system. But I want to talk a little bit about the older classrooms in Cottle. So, your building meets code because it meets the code at the time the building was designed, but it doesn't meet today's standards. And frankly, post-pandemic, everyone is feeling more and more obligated to have every space, no matter what its age, meet today's standards. So, what we're proposing for Cottle and the older classrooms here is to use an outside air, dedicated outside air unit. This is called an energy recovery unit, so it actually uses the heat from the air exiting to pre-warm the heat, the air that's coming in, but they never cross over. It just transfers the heat. So, what that means is all the fresh air being pumped in is new. There is no recycled air. So, yes, it is has a high level of filtration, but most importantly, you're not recycling the air that's in the rooms. You're bringing 100% new outside air in an energy-efficient way. And then, in the rooms, you're going to have what's called variable refrigeration units, which I think you have some already around the district. These cassettes that are on the wall, they recirculate the air and cool it or heat it. But, again, you're getting the fresh air from the energy recovery outside air unit, and then it's being cooled with the cassette VRF unit, which gives you individual control in each room. So, you're not dealing with, "I have no kids in here, I'm freezing," or "There's 30 kids in here, let's turn that up." So, it's an ideal hybrid system, and it's very cost-effective. So, at the Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, we're talking about upgrading the library, the cafeteria, air conditioning, the new wing, and then, the older classrooms will also have the same outside air unit with the VRF. Now, the new wing already has ductwork and air circulating, so that's a matter of adding cooling and better filtration to your existing HVAC units, so that won't be the 100% outside air system. Here's a proposed update for the library. We'll try and reuse the carpet, but, again, furniture supporting project-based learning and really making it into a next-generation learning space. And what's kind of exciting is to reimagine the cafeteria, which also hasn't changed in quite a number of years, with new furniture layouts and finishes and lighting, a new serving area to make it a brighter, more popular space. I remember talking with Bart, that room is used every day, every period of every day for something. So, it's a lot more than a cafeteria. It's a really important space in the school, and it deserves a better, an updated appearance. And what was a little hard for a lot of people to understand is that the image on the upper left is a space that's right behind us, right here, that's completely unused, and it connects the cafeteria and the library, and it also has those three exterior doors and an exterior plaza that is unused. So, we're going to remake that connection, renovate all those spaces, so the library, cafeteria, and that space will all be usable and connected. And then, just lastly, the infrastructure items here, accessible ramp, stone and masonry repairs, the hardware and security, some stair and railings at the gym exit, replacing the gym flooring, fire alarm system, and the mechanical ventilation upgrades. And as Lee said before, it's a $9.9 million project overall, with the majority of the money this time around being spent at the middle school, high school. And implementation would happen right after a successful funding vote. All your project elements will fully qualify for state building aid. Interest rates and construction pricing are a lot better than prior years, and the playing field improvements and related work at Cottle will be expedited to be usable as soon as possible, and then, all work would be complete by the start of the school year in 2023. And that's, that's it.
Okay. One more on the finances.
Thank you. Ms. Wu will add the financial piece to this.
Chris, can you help me with that?
So, just to give the.
Russ, you said 2023. Do you mean the 2022, 2023 year?
I mean, the beginning of the 23, 24.
Why, why was that one?
Well, it's 21 now, and it usually takes about six months to a year to do design and approvals. So, while the pile work probably will go first, you're going to need the following summer of 2022 and maybe 23 to finish the renovations. If it can be done sooner, it'll be done sooner, but typically, it's about a year for approvals and a year to two for construction. Let me think of your 2018 bond and where we are now.
Yeah. We're having a discussion that's not on microphones, so the folks at home are not going to be able to hear this.
Yeah.
So, just make sure we're, yeah. We're just discussing timelines, right?
Okay. And I have a brief presentation on the financials that would support a project that Russ was just discussing. So, the Tuckahoe community financially and, I guess, the financial statistics of the community, there are 1,252 single-family homes in the district with a total assessed value of $18,177,397. The median or the median typical assessed value for a home in Tuckahoe is $8,300. That means half the homes are valued higher and half the homes are valued lower, but the median is $8,300. In 2021, the school district tax rate was $1,0595.98 per $1,000 of assessed value. So, that means if you had the median assessed value home of $8,300, there's 83 times 1,595.98 would be your tax bill for school district taxes. And that would be translated to $13,250 approximately. That would be the median valued tax bill. Credit-wise, the district has an excellent credit rating. Moody recently reevaluated the district, and our rating remains at AA3, and interest rates, as you know, are at historic lows. So, the cost to borrow for this project is very, very low right now. So, how does a district pay for a large capital project? Large-scale projects on the nature that we're talking about tonight cannot be accomplished within an annual budget. Our annual budget is $36 million, and we're talking about a $10 million project. We could never raise taxes high enough to accomplish something of this scale. So, school districts issue bonds to fund large capital project improvements. They, these bonds allow the district to borrow funds at an advantageous interest rate. These bonds are typically tax-free, and the utilization of this process allows the district to take advantage of New York State Building Aid. When voters approve a project of this nature and do it in this fashion, we are entitled to apply for building aid, which, right now, for the district is about 24%. So, if we're talking about a $10 million project, $2.5 million of it are paid for by the state in partnership with the district. Of course, it's not paid for all at once. It's amortized over the life of the project, but that, we try to time the borrowing and the repayment of the debt with the building aid flowing in, and that helps the district make it more manageable to its taxpayers. And, again, school districts may only borrow up to the amount of funds that are authorized by the voter-approved referendum, so we can, we have to stay within the scope of the project that we described to the community, and we cannot borrow more money than the community gives us authority to borrow. So, the project cost, as we've discussed right now, is $9.9 million. The annual cost of debt for a $9.75 million bond, which is because we can pay for a little of it with some excess funds in our cafeteria fund, would be, so our annual cost to pay back that debt would be $728,000 over, I'm estimating about 16 years, based on the lifespan of the project and the way it's calculated by the state. If you subtract out our estimated annual building aid of $146,300, the net annual cost of new debt would be $581,700. And for that typical home that is valued at $8,300, that would translate to a cost of $266 per year for 16 years to pay for the improvements. Those numbers of years may change slightly, but that's about what we're estimating at this time. Graphically, I don't have a video, but graphically, we can take a look at the impact of the debt service on the district. The bottom blue bars are the existing debt that the district is currently paying back each year for older projects and other borrowings in the district. And that, as you can see, tapers down over the years to about, almost, it goes away, and I don't have my graphic color, so I can't see it as well, but it does go away over time in the next few years. On top of that, in the red, is the estimated cost of the borrowings for the current project that we're just finishing, and we're just starting up borrowing for that project now. We haven't really had to borrow long-term yet because we haven't finished the project, but as we finish it up, we will move into long-term financing, and you can see how that red bar flows through and pretty much maintains the first few years, the same level of debt that we were paying before. As debt drops off, we're picking up new debt. The green on top is the new debt for this project we're talking about. So, the first few years of the project, we do show a bit of an increase on that debt, but after four years, after five years, we drop down as the other debt falls off, and you can see that the total cost of debt is less than what we'd be currently paying for the next few years. So, debt is moving away, and it becomes almost debt-neutral after the first few years, and less than debt-neutral even to pick up this new, to pick up this new debt service. The next steps for the bond are, there will be community information and virtual town hall presentations, as well as information on our website that you can refer to. The community will vote on the capital project proposition as a referendum at the annual budget vote. It will be on the same ballot as the annual budget vote as a separate proposition, and that will be on May 18th, Tuesday, May 18th. And so, when you vote on the budget, you will also have an opportunity to vote on the bond. And if the bond is approved by the community, the next step would be a preparation of detailed plans and designs by the architect with input from the planning committee and the board, as well as administration and other people in the district. Once that's completed, and that takes a few months, as Russ was saying, that is submitted to the New York State Education Department for review and approval. That can take anywhere from six to nine months, depending on the volume of plans that are being presented up at Albany. Once that's approved, we can go out to bid and begin construction as soon as possible. And that concludes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, excellent presentation. It has a really good video, too, Russ. Can we just? Can we just solidify, I know I don't want to keep you much longer, but the timeline that you guys were just talking about, you and Terrez. So for the field, that you think we can get done sooner. What type of timeline you think we're looking forward to on the field?
He should have a mic.
You need a mic.
Do you have the mic?
I'm Cynthia's mic.
Oh, we need the mic.
So depending on how you want to do it, you could send the field up on its own, and then we might be able to get started if you have a May vote. We might be able to get started on the field this fall. If you want to put it in with the whole Cottle project, it'll probably take a little bit longer. But it really depends a lot on what's going on in Albany. We've seen, to our shock, some very fast approvals in the last few months, so, you know, we can look at that, but we understand that you want that field done as fast as possible.
What's the work time on that field? Once work gets started, how long you think it takes for that field to get done?
I think it's a three-to-four-month process. You know, the great thing about synthetic turf is you don't have to wait for it to grow. So it's all about preparation, and that work can take place mostly through the winter, except for, you know, the worst part of it.
Now, as far as the rest of the heavy work in the project, I know you said it would be done, likely be done, possibly be done by the start of the 2022, 23, no, sorry, 23, 23 school year. But when would the work actually -- that work would take place largely over the previous school year or that year?
Well, one reason I say that is because we know you're sensitive to construction during school year. So we want to allow two full summers for the work to take place. But I believe actually that some of the renovation work could continue during the school year if you could find a place to, an alternative place for lunch, which may be possible. That could really speed things up.
But a target start date for that work would be the summer following the 22, 23 school year?
So next summer.
No, it would be the 20 --
This summer, 20.
21. It would be 20 -- after the 21, 22 school year.
After 21, 22 school year.
Summer 22.
Summer 22.
Summer 22 would be the big, the big summer, and you might need the following summer to finish some things.
Right. All right. Okay.
And again, some of the infrastructure work, like the air conditioning work, too, that's another thing that you can't have that going on during the school year. So you might need a second year to do a few rooms. You might do some rooms one summer and some rooms the following summer.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for us?
Thank you.
Can you do a video of the library and do that? That was very nice.
It's -- we really have this building 3D modeled, Laura, so that's our issue here. We will do one, but because we had all the modeling mostly done for Cottle, it was -- it still was a couple of weeks of time to do that. And, you know, even with good computers, it takes 12 hours to render a video, so it's a time-consuming process.
But you can do it.
We can do it. It would be better if we were doing it when we were doing the construction drawings. We also have to design the whole thing, so it's not only building a model, you have to design it, then you have to render it. It's very time.
Yeah. It was exciting to see that video. It was very good. It's excellent.
Yeah, very good.
And the cafeterias look great long overdue. Kind of looks like a prison before.
It really does, doesn't it?
Still does.
Yeah. So once again, I think we're very excited about the bond. I think obviously, as you can see from the presentation, it's got a lot of good stuff in it. It's all important stuff, all stuff that we need, all stuff that's going to impact our kids and save money in the long run in terms of maintenance and repair, for sure. So we're excited about it. You're going to start hearing more and more from the district about it. We're going to be communicating as much as we can with the community. Dr. Goodman's going to be going to the Eastchester Town Hall meeting tomorrow to speak for a few minutes. And then on -- it was out in an email you mentioned you put out today to the community, but just to remind everybody, on Thursday, April 22nd, at 7:30, we're going to be doing like a virtual Zoom town hall about the bond, myself, Dr. Goodman, Laura probably joining us, and I think Russ as well.
And some school administrators.
And our school administrators, absolutely. And we'll have a Zoom, and we'll be able to answer maybe some questions or some -- I don't know if we do mail-in ahead of time. We'll figure that out.
Yeah, we'll figure that out, and we'll send that out to everybody. Ms. Lu will be there, too.
We'll do that. And then, you know, we'll be sending out mailers. Look, the communications will be starting, and they've already started, but they'll continue, and we'll try and get the word out as best we can. So any other comments or questions about the bond project? Good? All right. I'm going to get a lot of emails tomorrow, not to go into that, where you got those sunglasses. Those are some stylish sunglasses.
They just turn and.
Those are some cool-looking sunglasses, weren't they?
I didn't even know.
All right. I think we're good. We actually do have a little bit of business tonight. I almost forgot. We had a little bit of business, a little bit. It's quick, though. It's quick.
Okay.
We have a consent agenda. I approve a consent agenda, resolve the approved consent agenda items two through seven. Do I have a motion? Cynthia second, Terrez. Any discussion about any of the items on there? No? Pretty good? All in favor? And we have one business to the board, which is to accept a bid. Resolve the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby accepts the lowest responsible bid for plumbing services for the 2020, 2021 school year from Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating of Rockland Incorporated, South from New York. Do I have a motion? Terrez, second. Lori, any discussion? Why are we doing -- usually we do our bids in the beginning of the year, right? So what's this about?
Right. The contractor that we use, that we extended the bid last summer when we normally do our bids, went out of business. So we wanted to, rather than try to find a plumber every time we needed some repair done, we wanted to go out for bid again.
So it went out for bid. It went out of business. Okay. This is an odd time of year to do this, usually.
Exactly. But we can renew this bid two times at the same rate that if you approve it tonight, at that same rate.
Great. Okay. All in favor? Great. And then lastly, personnel recommendations. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through F as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Terrez, second. Lori, any discussion? All in favor? All right. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Terrez, second. Laura, all in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentations, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.